To order. Please rise for the flag salute. Love you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call. Jamie Bailey, board member. Bernadette Bauer, board member. Stephanie Smith, board member.
Brian Christelli, board member.
Michael Smith, board member.
Chris Desmond, superintendent.
Wendy Bell, board staff. Lee Monsta, please. Arnold staff.
A Dean Walker staff.
Eric Smith staff.
Thank you. Approval of board meeting minutes from May twenty third, twenty three.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes from May twenty third, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Has been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
An emotion made and seconded. I'd like to go ahead and make a comment. I was going back through our vouchers and looked through our past board meetings. And I'd like to pull the ASV voucher totaling forty seven eleven fifteen. There's not proper documentation for the preapproval that's submitted for that, and I'm not comfortable with approving something that hadn't been ran through our process system yet. So that'll need to go back until that's approved.
To make it a motion to amend the consent agenda for the approval.
Yeah.
Can I add the number on that?
The voucher number on that is one, six, two, seven, four, three. And I'm referencing when we have our system that we've been in place this year. Where we go through our computer system, they put in their requisition or I'm not sure what we're calling that exactly.
The inform page twelve.
Thank you. And that one. There was not one of those submitted for the preapproval, and so this needs to be adjusted so that we're following process and procedure.
So to clarify, voucher one, six, two, seven, four, three is tied to.
There's, there's two voucher numbers, one, four, three through four, seven, actually.
Okay, one, six, two, seven, four, three, three, four, seven. And you would like to pull that because those are vouchers that are in the voucher list of intend to pay that have not followed the travel request process. And our bills that are being submitted to the board to be paid without preauthorization by the board.
Correct. Yes.
Um, we'd like to because I would say.
I would like to make that motion. You'll have to take all of this one. So I would like to amend this consent agenda, make the motion that we pull the vouchers for the one, six, two, seven, four, three through four, seven. Until we have the proper preapproval in place.
Till the trial request.
Comes through to the board. Yes.
Okay, and I think that would bring in alignment with board policy that
Yes.
the board has preauthorized expenditures before you approve, which is why we installed the inform capable process.
Yes.
There.
There are seconds.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded for the pulling of the ASV vouchers, one, six, two, seven, four, three through one, six, two, seven, four, seven from the consent agenda until we get the proper documentation and an approval of those. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we need to complete the approval of these? That completes your amendment. Do we need to complete the approval?
I'll, I'll complete it. Okay, so we'll go back to the original consent agenda. There was a motion made by Jamie and seconded by Michael. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, what, what order are we changing the discussion items? I'm sorry, did you want to move B to A?
I would just like to move A to C and then shift the rest up. So B would be A and C would be B. I don't know if we need to make a motion.
I don't know if we need to motion for order, do we? Let's just make one.
Yeah.
Let's just make one.
I will make a motion to move item A under discussion items down below C and move everything else up.
I'll second that. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. So
Alright.
The new one will be the daily dashboard.
I will, Eric and I are going to be doing the data dashboard together. We're going to do this in two parts. I'm going to present on the data that we have and where we're at. And then Eric is gonna come in and kind of add to the conversation on what are we cleaning up? So we've been doing a lot of work on the data dashboard and the district data that we have. I'm going to present this from Adobe because Adobe gives me the ability to draw on our slides. So kind of align to our vision. I'm going to back this away. There it is. To our vision on really want to make sure that we're moving in a direction that prepares students for life beyond high school. We feel that the ultimate goal is if we're doing our job correctly, we're setting students up for the next phase of their lives. We've broken this down as we've been framing out our district strategic plan as having an early learning goal. As we've learned this past year, Greg Straggin and his team presented on the district early learning plan and how by putting our different interventions, early interventions in place, we can drive up our walk kids assessments, our walk kids data. Next is our master based learning work in which we're using a combination of I ready state assessments and then grade level assessments. And really what this will begin moving into is also by moving into our standards based grade book. So we can write comparison on how students meeting standard and how the district assessments are working. Next is our career college readiness work where we show that dual credit, work based learning and activity engagement. And really Eric's going to talk about where we or talk about some of the modifications we're going to make on our career college readiness level dashboard. And then our social emotional data on our panorama dashboard.
Excuse me.
Next year, we do not have the UDL dashboard built because the UDL dashboard is really how we'll be developing interventions. And that will be pulling from many of the same master based learning data. So we've been building out and embracing IEP software, which now we've been collecting the data. So we can move the data in a way that's visible. So we've been moving our IEPs and our student service doc, service documentation from the Word document to database document, which will enable us to view.
I have a question. And it's really, I'm sorry, it's kind of nitpicky, but I just need to clarify it in my head. It says CCR readiness. Do you, is it redundant? Or is it, is it clear career and college readiness readiness?
Oh, well, it's redundant.
Is that? I just need to ask.
It's like, it's like a pin number.
I was going to bug you all night.
It was. Like a recipe, huevos rancheros with eggs. Okay.
It's, it's, I feel like if you get away with it, the pin number, we can get away with it here.
Okay.
Personal identification number, number. I'm going to move my Hollywood squared around. Um, this is our pre K early learning data. I know last year Greg's been putting a lot of work, but through the last few years, this is our walk kids data has been on a kind of consistent downward trajectory from twenty fifteen. I'm actually pretty happy with this right here. We're showing this movement with some brief introduction. Walk kids data comes in early on like when students enter kindergarten. So really when we began looking at our students' performance on data strands, we actually, the blue is kind of good. You'll notice that our blue areas are beyond fifty percent of the population of our students. And when I show you that, it shows that the bulk of our students are not to fifty percent rate of kindergarten readiness. And that actually gives us three primary areas to target when working with our early learning partners and working with our own E cap areas is on math literacy and cognitive. And those are the three primary areas that are keeping us from a higher beyond fifty percent rate of kindergarten readiness. Not to say that these areas don't provide areas of growth, but are, are, are major growth points successful in these areas. So that is our early learning data. State data here. This is a dashboard that shows how as a district, we compare against the other schools. We can break the comparison data down by we can show the comp, we can show the breakdown down by kind of any schools we want. So I did is I did a comparison of one A and two A districts within our region. So that's EST one thirteen. I'm actually really impressed with our third and fourth grade team. You'll see that our third and fourth grade team outperform. The red line is the average of the area. And the, not the red line I drew, but the red line going up and down and the blue dot is Alma. So that's us. And you'll see that our third and fourth grade teams just here and here outperform state average. And then we're a regional average. And then we align pretty closely kind of to the region. And this is our twenty twenty two assessment data, twenty three data that's not yet been loaded into the state system. We have it locally, but we don't have it where we can compare. Compared to the rest of the state again, third and fourth grade due outperformance state average. And then we make a bit of a dip. And we know that we've made a dip, bit of a dip at the middle school and then we recover. So it lets us know kind of those areas and how can we perform in third and fourth grade and third and fourth grade outperformance state? So how can we keep our third and fourth, the rest of our students beyond that state average for the entirety in our district? So what does it look like this year? We've seen some, what I'm showing is a lot of different ways. If you have a question, I have the dashboard open. So I'm not showing growth from fall to spring. Because I felt for our end of year data, really what we wanted to see is how did this year improve over previous years? So that's what I'm showing in this presentation. But if you have a question over how did we improve from the fall? I had the dashboard open and we can go into the data dashboard and we can show it, break it down, and we can go look at our population of students and how we're doing. I'm going to take a moment because Eric pointed out today when we were going through this kindergarten, kindergarten wasn't polling. So he got kindergarten fixos polling. And, and then he pointed out that kindergarten is incredible and he was right. Kindergarten is incredible. So I will take a moment to go to the dashboard just so we can show you kindergarten. Because when Mark presented a few weeks ago on the curriculum adoption, they piloted the super kids, they launched the baggage books that went all in on master based learning. And I think it's worth pointing out the master based standard alignment. These super kids curriculum adoption and how by putting instructional materials, standardized alignment and teacher training in place, what, what has happened with our kindergarten team? So I'm excited to show that. Um, when you're looking at this, it's looking at our first grade team, you can kind of see this kind of doesn't jump like you'll say like this is the same population of kids. Right? So what I have at the bottom is I have first grade in spring of two thousand twenty two, and then I have second grade in spring of two thousand twenty three. So in comparing this, when you're comparing kid to kid, that's the growth that those, those students have made from spring to that year to that year. So gray is good. Gray is that gray bar, that lighter gray bar is how many students are the standard. That dark gray across the top is how many students are actually a year ahead. The dark blue is students that are one year behind and the light blue are students that are two years behind, two or more years behind. So that's actually great improvement when you're looking at cohort data. But you can also look at this when you want to see how is that second grade team or how is that first grade team doing? So the same, this is same teachers, different kids. And then this number is same kids, different teachers. And on, under both measurements, we see improvements between that first and second grade. So I mean, within internally within first. Third grade is actually continued to improve. When I show you third grade math, I'm actually kind of really impressed with our third grade math team. And fourth grade generally has, always has a really good consistent continuity and high level state achievement. Sixth grade I've been really happy with and eighth grade. Sixth grade is the year we adopted the, we blocked the schedule. And sixth grade, when I look at this data, it's kind of consistent issue in just twenty two. We can actually look at that too, and we can look at historic years. Sixth grade is consistently really struggling with that transition year. And what we, we, we hypothesized, one of the biggest issues our students are facing is they're changing buildings. And then you're also changing your entire day. So you go from a two period block day where your, their team taught to a whole new building on a sixth period day. And they did, and, and you're intermixed amongst seventh and eighth graders. So this summer, what we did is last summer, our leadership team moved all of the teachers around. So sixth grade is in one wing. So the students are not seventh and eighth graders and sixth graders all walking past each other. Cause you do one sixth grade classroom here and one down here and seventh grade there. Now sixth grader right at the front, eighth grader separated by a bathroom, seventh grade is down below. Most eighth graders want nothing to do with the sixth graders. It really mitigated the student interaction. Blocked down. So sixth grade is in a one first period block and a one, two block and a five, six block. Then you have your two periods electives in the middle of the day. Made it so you only have two teachers for the day and really mirrored the, the experience sixth grade had. While and eighth grade. And we feel that that's actually generating a huge improvement because this is again, spring of last year is here. And then this is spring of this year. And we see, we feel like pretty adequate growth and a big shift and overall sixth grade performance, their own internal assessments. We feel we're on the right track. Like we didn't feel that sixth grade underperformance was an issue due to they received bad instruction. It was, it's a lot to for a eleven year old. How can we mitigate this change that this eleven year old is experiencing? Um, our eighth grade teacher, ELA teacher has been leading our master based learning work. Kim, I'm just saying Kim, because that's really good. And she's been shifting her entire grade book to a standards based alignment. And she, we were really impressed to see that growth in that gray bar as well. So we stopped by and show her like that her student growth has been pretty astronomical. Some of the things you don't see is like our seventh grade team, well, our seventh grade group is a group of students that really struggled. They, they came back from COVID. And they have changed buildings to a whole new model. So we need to kind of acknowledge that this population here. This group, while they're in sixth grade, just this kind of improvement is good because when you think about where this population was on our fall assessing, and I'm not showing that, but our fall assessment was already pretty far behind at the beginning of the year. So the one year growth from this interim length here is actually pretty substantial. That's a population we're really going to want to keep our eyes on. That seventh grade population as they're moving through, that they face two years at home, change of building when they found, when they did come back. So we're going to see this seventh grade class as a class that we'll want to keep an eye on as they work their way through into graduation. Ninth grade is the first year that we actually moved assessment data into the high school. Um, and what we're seeing here is this is, so we use eighth grade to two thousand twenty two and ninth grade to twenty three data. We do see a growth of students that are one year behind. So this is your one year behind a population and that number grew. And the two year behind population shrunk. But we'd like to see more of that on grade level here. We'd like to see this gray bar to grow. So.
Should say, the ninth grade was a, just a one.
One and done.
It normally they have three diagnostic windows, just the way, and so next year will be ninth and ten. Definitely focus on ingredients and training for preparing students for diagnostic at the secondary.
We, exactly. So ninth grade, we don't have three testing windows at the high school. We will have three testing windows because we want to see that individual teacher's growth. We would like to see this model. We like I ready, I ready has a ninety three percent correlation as a alignment state assessment, meaning how our students score and I ready is like a point nine, within a point nine three range of what you should see on the state test. So I ready is highly representative of what the state assessment will be. It gives you great predictive data. And that's why we've been adopted. I read these are our district data. It's why we're showing that. It gives us the multi area and that's our ELA. Any questions on our ELA data?
You're reminding me in how often I ready diagnostics are done?
Three times. So fall, winter, spring. It's act, it's, it's actually based on the number of weeks of instruction. So it should be after twelve to eighteen weeks of instruction. That's how.
That's the chunk they assess.
Yes. And so most likely I'd say we'll have ninth grade in for three windows, tenth grade. I haven't, you know, actually decided this, but I would, I would imagine you'd see tenth grade for just the first two windows. The third window would actually be their status.
Okay.
So this is, um, so we can actually break this down by grade level. This right here, this one over here, far left, top left, that shows you their three bench score, their, their three scores. On, and that's kind of district as a whole. So as a district as a whole, on average, we went twenty one, point nine six. That's how students entered to thirty five percent to standard. And mid-year around January, forty seven percent of our students to standard by the end of the year. And I can tell you, I'll show you kindergarten. Kindergarten went from thirteen point eight five percent of our students to standard, seventy eight point nine five, seventy nine percent of our students to standard by the end of the year.
That's that's just literally off the charts. Like that's crazy.
So kindergarten, this is ELA.
It was basically flipped upside down.
Completely, yeah. Yeah.
So that, and again, I know that we, we work really hard to get an instructional materials adoption process. If you want to compare end of year, hang on, I'll do one other year. If you want to compare end of year, we can click on end of year assessment data. And you'll see end of year assessment data last year, forty five point three percent to forty seven percent. It's kind of hard to say because like high school never had, didn't have an end of year assessment. So they're only filling in, that ninth grade is only filling in our twenty three, and I think they're about, about a thirty five percent. So none of the growth made by the high schools calculating. So it won't show a clean calculation because it's only populating that one column. So we want to be able to kind of look at those and break those down. If you look at go in elementary, third grade has had incredible growth. You look at third grades grow to sixty four percent. You see those constant year after year gains being made. And elementary has been using I ready consistently in twenty one. Since twenty one. So if I show you like a middle school, it's going to show you like all red or all green because I ready was being used for like, I get in isolation for like one hundred students. So it shows weird for, it wasn't used for getting across the whole student population. So kindergarten is, Eric was right. Kindergarten is off the charts. And I've been highly, highly impressed with that team. Math. Um, we have growth. We sit around standard, but about fourth grade, we surpassed the standard. And seventh grade, we also had a big jump beyond standard. And then stay beyond standard in tenth grade. So we have about kind of air, different areas. And that's what again with regional one A and two A districts. And I like this because I like to compare because looking at the state score, like how many students passed, how many students didn't pass, it's really hard to kind of say like, should have had this many pass. I think looking at where we compare with the state average, like where is the regular Washington state student? And where is Alma in comparison to the traditional Washington state student? I mean, my vision would be as far as Grace Harvard or for regional EST one thirteen, one A and two A districts, that this is where Alma would be all the time. I mean, I, now that we know how to get better, I feel like we owe our students the best and our vision would be to be at the best. So and then this is our comparison on in state average. So fourth grade, again, a jump above beyond state. And in seventh grade, we take that jump beyond the state. So and those are kind of two high point areas. Again, this is last year's data. So, and then again, this is our math. So again, we're looking at first grade. These are the same population of students. So this is same teacher. And this is same student. So we're still seeing, you know, we're seeing demonstrative growth. Third grade was a population that I was really proud of. Third grade sat back here in twenty two. Third grade has done a huge work on standardized alignment with the math and going to the mastery adoption. And you saw that group on the third grade standardized alignment adoption. So we saw as every single one of our teams bought into our mastery worth has substantial growth on internal in district alignment. So each of the district teams that we're saying, you know, we want to map out and really identify what our students are learning. Incredible growth. Again, we saw that in sixth grade as well, that blocking. And the same instance is how many of our students. This is our students that are two on grade level. This is our student population that is one year behind. So we did see from eighth grade in math and growing population of our students that are too standard, but we did not move our students that are two or more years behind.
I think that really speaks to the power though to me of those kindergarten scores. Because statistically it's really hard to move a high school student that's already two years behind and to make that kind of progress versus intervention of having a K one, two, well, our pre K, one, two, three kids asked standard is just a very different level of intervention of what can happen. So.
Yeah, we, and we, it's, it's very difficult to get your students to, to get them back. Right?
Especially the lower they are, right?
You're, you're climbing a hill.
And also though, like on I ready, you know, I think that as they get middle school above instead of basing some of those assessments is probably going to make a, a big difference as well because a lot of those kids, when they know, I mean, elementary school kids typically know that they're there to learn and they want to put their best foot forward, not always the middle school, high school kids always think that way. Because and, and, and so it'd be nice to try to get the truest reflection of our students' knowledge in the upper grades.
So we had a teacher ask, we walked around prior to testing. It was like a day before testing. So it was a whole lot of time. So that question came up. Our students won't take it serious. And they go, and they'd only take it serious if I could put it in the grade book. And I was like, yeah, I mean, your grade should be reflective of what the student knows. You know, so in vis a vis, the assessment should be reflective of what the student knows. So if the grade reflects what the student knows and the assessment reflects what the student knows, why wouldn't the assessment be reflected in the grade? So they said, well, we don't know if we can put this in the grade book and you should, I'll, I'll put it in the board meeting minutes as the superintendent. Yeah, I mean, it should. I mean, I wouldn't use all three test windows because that wouldn't be fair.
Sure.
Because if you use the fall test window in the grade book and then you got better, so let's look at kindergarten. So if we told only eleven percent of our kindergartners, they should get a grade for what they can do. And now seventy four percent, well, that's a gap of sixty three percent of our kindergartners. Well, we shouldn't be telling punishing sixty three percent of our kindergartners of what they only knew in August. We should be saying, well, this is what you know now.
And if you're not, if you're truly doing the master based learning, then you should see the growth and let me know at the end. And you're meeting the standards and seventy four percent of those kindergartners are meeting standards. And clearly they should be all equally agreed in, in that assessment. So.
Now, I was going to say one quick thing about the kindergarten. Just, just to be clear on the data, not in the, in the fall window, that beginning of the year. Not every single kindergarten year that was ran through I ready. There was kind of, so that will be clarified for next year. But when you see that a lot of percent, that might be a much smaller population of kindergarten students that actually took the test. So just.
Can you clarify as well? Is it, when they take it in, so August, September, whatever it is, is it on grade level for the learning of a kindergarten for August, September, or what should be on grade level for the completion of, at the end of kindergarten?
The, the June test is assessed on what they should know by the end of kindergarten. I'm sorry, the one in June, the one in the fall?
Yes.
The one in the fall, you can set it up both ways on where they should be now. Like I ready will, curriculum associates will let you set the I ready assessment up two ways, which is we can show it as in what should you know in fall right now? We have it set up the off, the second way, which is what should you know by the end of the year?
So, so in fairness, I mean, I know the number can be a little bit wrong, but all right, that mean, of course they, to get, no matter what the beginning of your data was, to have your seventy four percent of your grade level beyond grade level in the year is pretty impressive. So that, that, that column is impressive. But it doesn't necessarily mean that at the beginning of the year or at the middle of the year, whatever the number, fifty three percent of the kids are not, they might've actually still been on target for the learning at that moment, but not all the way for the end of the year, right?
And we can show it the other way.
Okay.
But we felt that we needed to use I ready as a substantive base for. But we felt that we needed to use iReady as a summative base reflection. So it will show that green, more movement in that green bar. But we wanted to make it so the benchmark score didn't change throughout the year. We felt, again, because that's the, the, the pushing back, like the other argument, you can make it so it will reflect, the green bars will reflect where they are. In this point in time.
Right.
And then you would like to see the green bar grow slower. Or, or, but it'll, it'll be reflective of, are we moving at a faster rate than this, than the average? Are we moving at a slower rate than the average? And that's kind of the benefit of looking at it on the other way.
You're seeing like where you were at, you fell off your percentile, basically.
Yes.
Right?
And then the opposite way is what are you doing summatively?
Okay.
And we opted that we wanted to reflect the data in a summative instance, so you could see your growth compared to be where you need to be by the end of the year.
Yeah.
I, I personally like that, you know, looking at it from that perspective because. The key is, is at the end of the year, where are the kids?
Yeah.
For that grade level, where should they be? That's where.
But, but it would be easy for a teacher to also, I'm assuming, you know, I want to know right now in January. Where my kids are at based on this data we just took. How many of them are on track to be on track?
You know, I can ask that question. I mean, it will, is it easy? I know it reports out like where you are, like my daughter got it sixth grade. Getting a year, sixth grade in a year, and it gives you the report out on every student, on where they are. On grade level and at what point of the year where they should be at that point in the grade level, and that actually gives a few. And we're going to send this out to all parents. In fact, even high school, like everybody, even high school parents are going to get this because one of the big concerns was that. But they'll say like where your child is, are you fifth grade, end of year, fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, end of year. But the green bars are not changing. Just telling you what the students are.
Thank you.
Any questions on our mastery based learning work? I, I think, like I said, our, our pilot teachers, what was most impressive is, is we could break it down to our pilot teachers and our mastery based learning work. Who've been doing the standardized alignment. And you could actually see the, the gap, the growth, student growth on the alignment of standards. Like as I align standards, I've had growth. And as I've made a change in my grading, I should say, as I've changed my grading from what you know. On there was a change in the student performance in the class. So, next one is the career culture readiness. Right now, this top bar is our non-going rate. Our non-post-secondary going rate. I think. Twenty twenty one, it's at about. Not. See if I can write it by finger. So about sixty seven percent is our non-post-secondary going rate. That's about, a bit more than, about seventeen, twenty percent higher than the state average. That's just not going. And, and that's not a good thing. This is a trajectory we really want to reverse. Because this is our students not pursuing any form of post-secondary education. I want to point out how the number gets in. A lot of questions is like, well, I, I know a kid or I spoke to a student on, or I. I follow my students on social media and I know where my students are going, or I have a great relationship with my students. I know that this is where they went. This number is, comes from the Washington S S I D number and the National Clearinghouse number. So. This is not an opinion based driven number. That means if a student graduates from Alma, they take their S S I D number, their state student ID number, and it plugs them into the state college system. So this number is reflective of who shows up on the day one of post-secondary education. Now, it's not without errors. So. The Washington State technical, the technical college system is managed by the community college system. So you're going to see community college numbers and C T Cs combined.
Hmm.
You could ask a question about, what about apprenticeships? Well, that's an even more difficult question. Because the apprenticeship system that logs your apprenticeship hours, which is through arts, the apprenticeship registered training system, which is their data collection system. We're not, this is not current arts data, but it does take community college data. And about eighty percent of Washington State's apprenticeships run their R S I, their coursework, through the community college system. So it would be capturing eighty percent of your apprentices, apprentices, because they're taking their college classes, they're taking their apprenticeship coursework through a community college. But if they're in an apprenticeship that does not run their college, their, their coursework through an apprenticeship, it wouldn't be tracked. So you're right, we could have a gap in apprenticeship data. But by and large, if there is a gap, we're really within, and we're talking one or two kids. Because this number is reflective of who shows up day one. Um. This top bar right here is our community college going rate number. And that's maintained a roughly about a downward trajectory. And this is our four-year university going rate number. And, hang on. I will show it to you. This, this is pulled from the state. We actually go a long ways back. So we go back about to two thousand and five. So we've actually seen kind of an, since two thousand and nine. This increasing trajectory of students not pursuing. So we had a two thousand and seven up to about sixty three percent and then dip. And got to about a sixty percent. COVID year was seventy one percent. Non-post-secondary going rate was also our lowest four-year going rate of about six percent. So kind of in, if we had a hundred graduates, that would mean fourteen of our students pursuing a four-year degree and twenty are pursuing a two-year degree. Our no degree is set up like class of two thousand and fifteen, seventy percent of, of our graduates in the class of two thousand and fifteen, so this is eight years out, have no education beyond a high school. I'll share that with you statewide. When you look at that, the state's set pretty consistent, fifty percent, and that's been a rise. The state gets around like a forty one percent. State had a nine percent increase. The state's been pretty consistent around forty percent. So we run about a little more than twenty percent beyond the state average on that going rate. Why is it important? Is here. This is our student income rates. So we see a change of incomes. Now we're getting pretty far out, right? Like this is, you know, sixteen years out of high school. Versus this is sixteen years of high school. So when you get your median income earnings, and I think. So it's the gap on, what is the income gap for our students based upon level of education? And, and you can see the, the change. You can kind of see the breakdown right about here on introductory level employment. And then the change of that introductory employment wage. So do you think that is important that we need to. Part of this? I mean, if our goal here is to change the life trajectory of our students, then the best way is to really think of ourselves as our role in the post-secondary transition. And hopefully, kind of create data and impact that post-secondary transition. So that brought us to. This data here. Any questions on how our students are going as they leave? So when we began looking at this, and so we're going to kind of hand some of this over to Eric. When we're looking at our university admissions requirements, so this is bare minimum. Um, you, bare minimum, and it doesn't mean you get in. Generally, it's a three point two GPA you need to get accepted to a post-secondary education. You can get in with a two point eight, but you have to write an essay explaining the two point eight. So if you're point four lower than a three point two, you have to write an essay to explain. So we use the data on kind of that explanatory point. Forty eight percent of our students have a two point eight GPA. Thirty five percent have completed Algebra II, which is the bare minimum requirement. And what we see on the base level data, so we're, we're still cleaning. Just want to really caveat when I hand it over to Eric, Eric. What it looks is about twenty five percent of our students, we have, are close in that area to have the necessary benchmark to pursue a post-secondary education. Like that, that, the higher level, the higher level education.
Before a year.
Before a year.
Right, okay.
So, um, if we're having about seventeen percent go, we're looking at seventeen percent are going out of the twenty five percent who can't. So we think it's a really easy target point to target just the students who can go. And kind of cleaning up that transcript. And what does that transcript look like? A big step, and I'm going to steal Wendy Slender real quick. She's in East Chris Harbor High School Accredited. Because a non-accredited diploma, you can't, well, you know, most universities, I don't think any state universities, you can't go straight to university. With a non-accredited high school diploma. So students at East Chris Harbor High School are not allowed to go to military. And could not go to university. It's not allowed. Because they didn't have an accredited diploma. So the accreditation process made it so forty more of our students actually could go. To military or university, which was not even an option. So we need to really make sure that we're looking at these transcripts and our students getting what they need because realistically seventeen percent of the twenty five percent isn't a bad rate. When you think that twenty five, only twenty five percent can. So our thought is, is one of the best ways to raise this is ensuring that our students have met the C A T A R requirements. And this is a lot of the work we're doing at that launch.
Hmm.
Is how are we cleaning up our transcripts? How do our transcripts read? And a lot of our master based learning work, since students meet standard, cleans up the ability to ensure our students have a transcript that reads. To the Washington State C A T A R requirements. The caters are university admissions requirements. Because we can award credits along the caters. Our master based work will enable us to have a C A T A R diploma. You want to talk, you want to go to career ready first before I go? Do you want to? You stop sharing, or what do you want me to do to talk about?
I was going to go into that. This is the new, what Chris is talking about is the new data dashboards that were just recently launched. Is where you can start seeing some of the, breaking this, but this, we're not pulling in everything, especially when we're talking about career ready. We're not pulling in, pulling everything in all of the components of, I didn't ready at this point. You can see. Which indicators on the right hand side, they were pulling in those, the GPA, the dual credit, Algebra II for the college and then the, the career ready as well. And there, there's another, I'll show you the scorecard and you'll see some things that we're not, we're just not quite set up in the, in our student information system. Of how we track it to then pull it into the dashboard. If you're at the, uh, the senior awards night, you saw this, and they, they had the chords for the college and career reading. There was a lot of. For that, particularly Christie Counseling Center, and I, I, I don't know who all, I know at least those individuals have worked on that, but there was some handwork that was done to. And, you know, especially when we talked about some pieces, community service and things that are not. Necessarily tracked in Skyward right now to pull into this. So that's some of the difference. But dual credit. So when we look, right, the main thing on this right now was pulling in that course file and starting to indicate on the course file. You know, if it is a dual credit course, and getting all of those. And definitely we have increased our dual credit opportunities. And those courses, those credit, those courses that are dual credit, including the ASU courses are now there, they, if they are in this calculation. But we don't, if you look at. You'll see that the, it's, it's a, especially because we're, you're, see, we're only really looking at current year, junior years and seniors. And we had to pull in a lot of historical data to even get here because we didn't get attendance. And you see, we're still talking about those first two years of the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. For those COVID years to get that full package on some of this. So that, that's where I told Chris, like, okay, we had to go back and pull this to record data in. To, to get some of those components and that's a little bit trickier. I, I don't necessarily like that route. But you can see once. This, this is, this is, there's a scorecard available for every student right now. It's just that we now need to. And another piece that we're not pulling in is the, like, that we are doing, you are doing industry, the, the I R Cs, the industry recognized certifications. And we are doing workplace learning, but currently that's not pulled in because of, uh, we have to. We have to refine a little bit about how we pull that from Skyward. But this gives you an idea, like this other kid could really, we could give, hand this kid their scorecard. And you can see where they're at on all these indicators. Did I come by looking at, you were thinking?
I think you did, actually, because you're hitting the areas and where, what we're trying to look at. We want every student to have a scorecard like this. That'll be a part of. As we're kind of building a post-secondary apprentice plan that lets them know where the benchmarks are, but where they want to go. The ultimate goal is that their doors open. So we want to make sure that, uh, we, hang on, I gotta, administrator.
I'll, I'll point you to it, Anna. I'm, I'm showing, th- this, when we go back here, you can start, this starts pointing it out, same thing for that career and college rating is by. The demographic groups as well, like we see in everything else, when iReady scores, we can start to look at by, by gender, by low income, how are we doing for all students?
So we're going to start first on who can go. And then the next one is what are you going to drive those indicators? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of research on the subject now. And what we know is there's four drivers to completing a post-secondary education. The number one driver is, um, do you know what you want to major in? Um, so number one reason why students drop out of a post-secondary education is they don't know why they're there. The second one is academic preparedness. The third one is they run out of money. And fourth one, they struggle in social skill development. So one of the big goals right now is you see the big gap between the career readiness and the college readiness. We need to begin re-briding those. Because we have a lot of students completing a C T E pathway, but are we also doing our dual credit rate? And we really don't want those separate because those two numbers drive each other. Because we could have a large population of students who know exactly what they want to do for a career, but they don't have the academic preparedness. Or we could have students doing like a dual credit, college in the high school class or an A S U class, but they don't know what they want to major in. And if you don't bring those both up together, we don't bring up the post-secondary completion rates. Even if you go to a technical college, you're still going to need an English one oh one. Or an English one twenty, uh, which is the technical reading, technical writing. And most colleges will take English one oh one and English one twenty as an interchangeable credit. So they're both worth the same. And what we know is students who have usable dual credit, um, twelve credits, so one quarter of usable dual credit completed are sixty four percent more likely to complete a post-secondary education. And like that, it's, it's pretty finite because if you have one quarter of college credit done. A student will generally go, well, I've already got a quarter done. I might as well go finish. And the odds of completing their post-secondary education increases by sixty four percent. And that's after years and years and years and years of quantitative analysis. This has been researched until. Post-secondary preparedness planners are blowing the base. So really, that's what we need to do. We need to ensure our students know what they want to major in. And a lot of people say kids are too young, but I'll, I'll push back on that because universities don't all offer the same major. So if you get to a university and you don't know what you want to major in and they don't offer it. Your odds of dropping out of college skyrockets because you go, oh, I earned all these credits. You don't have my major. And then the students don't transfer. They just drop out at that point. So they do have to know where they're going to go. That's the reason why knowing what you want to major in is the number one indicator if you're going to complete your college education. And then do you know, do you have credits and you actually do it? And if we can drive those two numbers up in unison, we can increase our post-secondary completion rate and we can go from a. I'm going to say seventy percent post-secondary, um, non-completion rate, we can drive that seventy percent non-completion rate down.
You can see the, you can see the spread of the numbers right there in the grade, the, uh, not college ready to college ready and down to the lower degree, not career. It's much higher number for career, be much lower number for college. You can see it by the actual numbers.
So that is going to become one of the major priorities. I do. Eric kind of already showed it, though. That gets us into our career readiness data, which we do have high rate of student engagement activity and C T dual credit. So it's, again, it's re-briding those numbers, right? And, and again, it's looking at what type of credit. So if we're doing a. Graphic design program, are we doing community college credit? Where are students going? Is it usable? Should we be looking at a university level credit? Should we be looking at a community college level credit? Is it transferable? Great example is our apprentices, we have registered apprentices, but are they able to carry their apprenticeship work into a blueprint reading class for mechanical engineering degree? And can they carry their machining work into the machine credit? And is that apprenticeship transferable to a mechanical engineering degree? And that'll actually show an increase in the mechanical engineering equation. Because if you wanted to be a mechanical engineer, I know Central's mechanical engineering technologies requires. Five credits of physics, five credits of calculus, five credits of blueprint reading, and five credits of machining. So if you could carry that in with this college in the high school physics and a college in the high school calculus, you've completed your prerequisites for admission into the engineering degree. So your odds of completing an engineering. So your odds of completing an engineering degree go up substantially because you can graduate high school with your admissions requirements already done. Your prerequisites to get into the degree, done. So you graduate high school, accepted to university and immediately accepted to the college. So it's, it's, it's aligning that cohesion and do we have data to show that post-secondary cohesion alignment? Questions on that? We need to clean the data up to show that, but that's what we're working towards. Our social emotional, um, this is not great, but Wendy's here because um, we were still in the middle of the testing window as I built the presentation. So that means I really only have all data. Um, so we'll actually have this kind of completed. So I told you, as I go through this presentation, it's going to become thinner and thinner and thinner. So this is the part where it's starting to get thinner as we're presenting on data in the midst of the culminating testing window being open to kind of see where the students are at. Our big goal though is the areas that we noticed, areas of growth is, these are our, um, this is our strength area. So these are our low and medium areas. And we noticed that we're low on that social awareness. We're lower on the social awareness and emotional regulation. So as we begin our social emotional supports, those are the two areas that we really want to prioritize. Um, we are high in self-management. So when a student does get frustrated, they stop themselves. Sometimes.
Many of them.
And our UDL is really going to be based upon our um, our new, we were moving our IAPs into an online system that has checkboxes on the type of services we're providing students. Those checkboxes are going to be able to be converted into a data dashboard. So then we can actually start looking at the variety of services we're providing students. And then what are those services can we provide support for in our general education classrooms to reduce our pullout service rate? So then can we say, okay, we have large dyslexia rates. And maybe we can provide additional dyslexia services for our general education futures. Because we're providing so much in the way of dyslexic, dyslexia supports for our students. So can we build our summer studio time and our professional development time in regards to providing those dyslexia-based services? So that'll be, now that we're collecting the data and we've moved our IAPs from Word documents to an actual embrace data collection tool. Next year's work will move into actually identifying those types of services to break down the services and running classroom support. This a lot? Like I said, the data shows, like Mark presented, kindergarten. Kindergarten went through badge book standards alignment curriculum adoption. And then the data shows the impact kindergarten's made. So it's like you can see the work they're doing and impact upon student achievement. I'm really impressed by that.
I have two other quick pieces of data. That's just the parents square launch. So that, launch, you can see some of the numbers. One hundred and seventy-one people currently uh, using the app. And we'll continue to communicate with parents. Everybody, everybody can still, once we switch, everybody can still get messages and we can still hit the button that if in or any emergency messages, we can still send it out in voice. But this is, it's, it's really now going to be educating parents that they have complete control of how they get the information. Uh, so like a couple of messages went out. Chris has been sending messages from last week and to this week. There's a couple of messages uh, that were put out tonight, but in, you know, so. Uh, I saw most of the, there, there's about a hundred and seventy-five people sent in for instant messages and the rest right now, because it's the default setting. Moves you to that digest most where it gets you, uh, it gives you the message at six o'clock, no matter how many came out. So I did two this afternoon. If you get those two messages.
I just saw them right now. My phone was buzzing and it was the school. I didn't know that's how it worked.
And so uh, it will, it is still an education process for us all, for staff and for parents. Uh, but hopefully then uh, we can really get parents where they, they get, they get control. How do you want, do you want to end the text? You, you need to turn certain things off and on. You can turn the time at which you get it too. So.
And the app is super easy.
Okay.
It's very, it's not overloaded with a bunch of gadgets and things to look at. It's just very easy.
There's a few cleanup things. I already had two, two parents that they had off the work, nowhere was they wanted. So this is cleanup, probably watching it right now, getting parents into it before the start of next week would be a good. And then uh, the website is currently in production. So I could show a little glimpse. Uh, and that's the temp, that's a, but it is currently in production, to launch at the uh, July. So. Christine and I met and looked at this and so now it's in the, the production mode. We got a photo day here. Hopefully we can get some really good photos that will sit on the site, but that's, that's just an update on that as well.
Is the parent square just a one-way communication?
No, it, it can, the parent square does have direct messaging. So if you uh.
You click on your child and do it?
Yeah, you can message a teacher uh, and direct messaging. The nice feature about that is also it translates uh, as well. So if, if you send the message in English and it's going to Spanish, it's going to begin that they get that translated message in Spanish. They can respond in Spanish and the message is back to you in English. So.
That's, that's great. Cool. Thank you.
Any questions on the data?
You have access to it? To the data?
I mean, like who, who gets to see the data dashboard? Like teachers?
Um, teachers don't because the teachers get their own individual classroom data as they pull from iReady. They get the straight curriculum associates printouts. Um, we, we have different areas restricted. My principals have complete total access to it. Because uh, we can actually, um, principals have full data. Because I can actually go into, like I have to be really careful with what dashboards I show in the middle of public working. Because some of our dashboards, like if I pulled up the read, find ready dashboard, if I go to the bottom, it will actually list out by name every student and how they're meeting. Um, and then like, like this is our already gap analysis. You'll see like nine, only nine, like nine percent of our students standard in my. Um, then if I go here with our tier, our students material, if I click on that number, if I press on that number, it'll pull up a list of the students. So I can actually, we can um, filter down by going to elementary school. And then I can go by the end of year assessment. And we noticed that elementary end of year assessment, only six percent of our students now are two years behind at the elementary. If I want to know of that six percent, I mean, this is a pretty impressive rate for the sixth, the sixth grade. That elementary school is just hitting it out of the park. Um, and if I wanted to see who's at risk, who are the hundred and fourteen students that are at risk? I can press on that at-risk rate and we can go student by student. But as a result, we also have to restrict that because that starts getting really deep into federal privacy.
Right, right.
So um, it is not broadly accessible beyond the administrators. Because um, like just having this here accidentally risking touching it would be.
Stressful.
Stressful. Um, so I don't let my finger go anywhere near that because that would break so many federal privacy laws if any one of those things popped up. Um, but we can actually identify and we can drill down. And that's really when we start making that shift from quantitative data to qualitative data. The ones we pivot and we go, who are these hundred and fourteen kids and what can we do? And let's just start hiring every single one of those students individually. So once you get to a hundred and fourteen, you're not that far away from figuring out what do we need to do to ensure that there is no red line leaving the elementary school.
Okay.
I think we're at a point where it's been about a two-year process, so more to go. But knowing what we can do to be better. Say like, I think when we looked at our post-secondary going rate, we're about twenty percent off the state average. So when we look at how many of our, and that of our students, percentage of students going versus who can go, that's a pretty good rate. So maybe we need to improve the rate of our students can go to a post-secondary education and we'll see those numbers climb together. So lots of, I think lots of incredible opportunity.
Definitely appreciate the data.
Yeah, it's a lot of data.
Well, having something to compare to, something to see growth for.
Because often I just think that we never really had a good indicator of whether the interventions that, you know, our staff is utilizing, isn't really making a difference or not. And by closely examining the data year to year, the beginning of the year, mid-year, end of the year, it really will help us catch it quicker so we can pivot if we need to uh, to close some gaps and areas or to fix things. And you know, because we're going in the wrong direction, we'll want to go a different direction.
Yeah, I mean, this is all about improvement. I mean, the data I want, the data needs to be very emotionless. Like this is what it is. And now that we know what it is, is we have, I mean, an obligation for our students to get better. I mean, we know now, um, the bulk of our kindergartners are two grade level. So I mean, realistically to one level, we just have a big priority of keeping our students there. So what we need to do to keep our students standard.
And if all of a sudden there's a big drop in first grade, then it gives you something beyond urban legend, like, okay, let's go in and what happened?
What happened?
Didn't happen or whatever it is.
And, and as we began aligning, Eric, basically, and I always get, I think they're cringes when I talk about new data dashboard opportunity.
Opportunity.
I was like, I was like, I want, I want scatter, I want to scatter, new one I gave was I want to scatter plot data with a pivot, um, with that correlation coefficients. Because I said, because those are your, um, like your dots. And then your correlation coefficient. And I go, if we can actually show a straight line and I want to use it on iReady assessment with classroom grades or in our classroom grades as those, because we launch our standard-based grade book, we can start seeing what do class grades have to do with student ability? And the more loaded the scatter plot, the less they have to do with each other. And the more straight line, the more they do. So that's the new one we're going to be working on is we want to make sure that we have accurate data on as you're getting a grade in a class. What do the grades actually have to do with the student ability? And we want to get as close to a positive. So like a, a negative one, correlations from positive one to a negative one. Negative one would mean like they're inversely correlated. Like it means if your grade goes up, your ability goes down. Hopefully they're not a negative number, but we'd like to get as close to a positive one as possible. And that's why we use iReady. iReady runs at a point nine-three correlation coefficient across data assessment, which means it's pretty close to the same thing. Um, and we want to get to a point where our class grades are as close to student ability as possible as well. And how close are the classroom grades reflective of what the students are actually capable of? And then how do we use our late starts to begin tightening that correlation to get closer and closer and closer to student grades being reflective of student ability? And we can measure that out. I mean, this is a simple math, mathematical equation. Once you have student ability versus classroom-based assessments, which is every assignment is a classroom-based assessment. That, that's your grades. It's your grade is a measurement of classroom-based assessment. We can begin calculating out that, um, we can begin calculating out those pieces. So that's the new one. Eric, you said that, they said we're crazy. What do you say Sarah said for that?
No, she says she has that.
She has it. So we, we will have that. So that'll be one that I hope we can show up next year where we can break down and show by and large what classroom grades have to do with student ability.
Okay. It's a lot.
I like it.
It was so, it was, it's so, it's just, it's so good to have all of these finally coming out and really being able to like dig into really raw numbers, where we are and what's going on. I think it's great. I know it's been a lot of work. So thank you. Um, Katie Dahlger, she's uh, presenting on the school improvement plan.
She's on.
I'm, I'm here. Can you guys see me or hear me?
Yes.
Send yes. Hi, I apologize for not being there in person. I um, Julie Moore texted me and uh, said, you know, you're presenting tonight. No, no, that's news. But um, I can, I can definitely talk about the SIP plans. So um, Chris tasked each building administrator with creating their SIPs, their school improvement plan. And if we were a Title I school, we had a template from OSPI that walked us through the process. If we were not a Title I school, we had a template from OSPI that also walked us through the process. One was ten pages and one was four. So it was obviously more advantageous to be a non-Title I school. However, um, it was really uh, positive to see that all three schools had some consistency across all of their SIP plans. Um, that's redundant. All because Mark and I had to then consolidate them into a district-wide one that we did submit to OSPI. These SIPs that you're looking at are not submitted to OSPI. They just get approved by um, the school board. But each building wanted to focus on school culture through either behavioral programs, sense of belonging, those kinds of things, or through um, they also wanted to focus on school improvement in the areas of reading and math. And uh, the middle school and elementary school also had subsections focusing on student achievement through various programming, through either ELL or special education. And so when Mark and I took all of those documents together, we focused on district goals around school culture and school improvement. And we tied them all in, we tied them all in to mastery-based and universal design and social emotional initiatives. So we um, we wanted to make sure that what we're doing in the district and in our SIP goals is aligning with where we are going instructionally. So that way everything's working in concert together and nothing is seen as something that is separate and outside of what we are all working towards collectively.
What I think is important to note is school improvement plans, Washington State eliminated AYP annually, annual yearly progress. Uh, but school improvement plans never legally went away. What happened was is districts had the agency to set their data indicators on areas that we feel that we can have the most impact. And they were always meant to be sent submitted to the board and improved by the board. So year one, we needed to make sure that we're hitting base level legal compliance by having board-approved school improvement plans. Our goal is, as we're now collecting our data dashboard, we'll move into our board goals. Board goals will be reflect upon the building goals. And we'll start bringing cohesion from instead of saying we met the state requirement to, are, is the building going through the work aligned to the board work, which is aligned to our district data and our district strategic plan? And do we have cohesion and alignment of all of our pieces? I think year one was, and this is the ball Katie picked up to carry. We didn't have just the board approval on school improvement plans and base level legal compliance, had to have that in place. I think we'll be seeking. We have it for the next board meeting to give you a chance to review and ask questions, approval on the school improvement plans at the next board meeting. Any questions on those? I'm not, we're not promising great. We're promising, we're not doing this and we need to get this done. And we need to be, get this to work. It needs to be aligned to the work that we're doing.
Yeah.
So we need to start, our, our goal for the next year is to bring in the school improvement plan to a layer of intentionality.
And nobody has any questions. That seems good. Thank you, Katie. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I apologize for not being there. Thank you.
It's okay. Sorry. Thank you so much. Okay, I will do Elma's newest learning opportunity presenters, Wendy Beldrum and um, Harry and Martin Morris, which we've met you once before. Welcome back and thanks for coming.
Um, Harry and has been working in the shadows and helping to review our board policies and a lot of our work. He's also been working with our district for some, brought a lot of our board work. So we're ready to do board policies and stuff. Know that Harry has been working diligently with the board. Just not face-to-face. A lot of the background cleaning of our board policies, if we've been, we've been bringing alignment. So it's great to have Harry back. And Harry has also been working very face-to-face with Wendy, our teacher leadership team. And I stole part of Wendy's presentation to talk about accreditation. But Wendy's going to talk about the greater vision on, when we say all, we mean all and what our vision is for our almost students.
Yes. Good. Thank you. Good to be back again. We're letting a Harry in here. So the uh, we are, you know, we've gone through lots of transformations this year and lots of growth. And we're excited to be working towards another learning opportunity for our students. Um, as uh, as Chris mentioned, that accreditation was a big piece. We recognized the equity needed to be in place. Um, I think you received a copy of. Um, I think you received a copy of the letter, but we now have it officially. And so uh, and I've had people come up and ask, what does it mean for accreditation? Does this mean that they're actually getting a diploma now and things like that? So we'd like to get the word out. Um, the, the ESD one thirteen and the Association for School Accreditation uh, in their letter commended, when they say East Grace Harbor High School, this included our Eagle Sky Virtual Academy and our Open Doors program as well as East Grace Harbor itself. And just delighted that we had thirty-two graduates and thank you to everyone who supported the equity of, of our Elma School District graduates, celebrated in the same way on the same day. It was just, I mean, that was just a moment that I don't know that I'll ever experience again, but just the kids, you know, my parents emailing, what time do we have to be there? What should we pray? You know, and just even, even with this senior safe and sober party. So just many things, but we've been commended with our accreditation for having high levels of rigor. And knowing the importance of the accreditation process for the community, career paths that have multiple options and building the reputation of alternative, alternative education, excuse me. High levels of parent involvement. Recommendations to be reported at our third-year review are to continue to pursue and build the transition of middle to high school and pathways prior to eleven, twelve, as well as continuing the culture of making the data public and using it for goals and decisions, student and parent voice and data points. So clearly, what we're just seeing, we're on, on that path. And it's very exciting to be, to have that. Okay, so that's a little bit about the accreditation process and why that was so important, as well as the, the journey of, of just identifying that our programs are growing. We've added, you know, with the, the online program as well as with ASU and and the project-based learning around the standards. And so we're really looking for that empowering all of our students to be prepared for success now and in life after graduation. So the, the work that is also exciting is that this ties and is really grounded in the portrait of an Elma Eagle. And just that we want to ensure that all students are culturally aware. I think culturally can encompass, you know, more than just ethnicity. And so I, you know, I was surprised when one of our graduates walked across the stage with her little baby, but I will tell you that mom worked really hard um, with the birth of a child to, you know, just through all of it. And, and just, you know, like, at first I was like, oh dear, we didn't talk about that. Uh, it truly represents, you know, just the diversity that we have. Uh, just, I, I like this. And I remember when Christie said, coming up with the word neighbors in the community forums of informed and engaged neighbors. Critical thinkers, that's definitely through the mastery base and just having students know what they need to demonstrate proficiency and asking what if is pretty exciting. I've had the, the pleasure of, you know, having an office right next door to the two classrooms with Bill and Jeff. And even today, the last days of school, we have students who are, you know, they're baking sourdough bread, but it has something to do with science and they're tied it in. It's like, holy cow. And then I hear a young, you know, one of the students ask a question of how it relates to I don't know, some historical perspective. And I'm just going, sourdough bread is not that, but it is. They tied it around. That is visionary. And that's, I think, just this whole journey that our entire district has been on is very visionary. That they are effective communicators. This sometimes, you know, I think in our, at least with my parents' generation, and even a bit with mine, it's, you know, kids are to be seen and not heard kind of mindset. Where now, we really need our, our students to advocate themselves to be able to effectively communicate what, what are their goals? What, what is it that they are striving to achieve? Uh, we definitely know that resiliency and adaptability is a key. Just whether it's Elma or wherever, but particularly, it's wonderful that we've identified that within our own portrait. And then just the practical knowledge of common sense and living quality. These, this encompasses our, our process with just within our district initiatives. The, the K through twelve, we've seen the data on that and just in, in it now can identify how it is really directed impacting. Step two is just looking at, we've had the long-range facilities and just the resources that we have with our programs. This is where our move to the annex, again, just have to really appreciate the support from not only the community, but within the district itself. We're looking forward to having larger classroom spaces, really keeping it very project driven and working together with other departments and and developing pathways that are already, you know, for example, if we were to look at the manufacturing, that pathway is pretty well established. But now how can we support and mastery-based learning and just partner together? The portrait of an eagle, we've already looked at that and just opening doors. Uh, universal design, I like to just keep reminding people around me that yeah, you know, historically, universal design was tied to, we think of that as being, you know, special needs or IP. But really, all of us have our own way of learning, whether we're tactile or, you know, more aesthetic, but or cognitive. To be able to provide options for students in how they demonstrate and that choice. I think that's been my biggest growth this year with working with East Grace Harbor is just understanding the power of choice with students. And, and parents will say, I wish they had this much flexibility when I was a kid. It, it, it does feel different. It makes a difference, you know, and, and that's really what we're doing across the district and within our own program.
So as a school board member, you have to be thinking, what is it that we're preparing students for? And you've already set up, you know, that we want them to be successful for career, anything post-secondary. Because remembering, high school is not the end, it's actually the beginning. And so everything that we've been finding out about what do high schools in particular need to be able to do for the future? And when you look at the World Economics Forum, they listed out twenty-five key attributes or skills that students need to know and be able to do. And some of those are listed right here, you know, uh, you know, that's, they believe if a student's going into the workforce, that they need to have a more interdisciplinary approach to their, to their work. You know, I, I was at Boeing for many, many years as the software development manager. And, you know, my background was elementary ed, you know. And then I went to business school. So I, I brought all of those things in. So it's not like I'm sitting in my office saying, I'm gonna do math right now. I'm gonna do, you know, I'm, I'm doing all of those things all the time. So why shouldn't school be like that as well? The, the schools have to be able to, and you're already doing that, thinking about what career pathways and offering those pathways to students. And that students being able to articulate, this is the path I think I want to follow. They may not go all the way with it, but that's okay. If we're doing things right, no matter what path they pick, they're prepared. And that's the focus. And then, uh, you know, meeting the needs of the traditional programs as well as what we want to do in the future. That's the balancing act. You know, I'm so tired when I go in the grocery store and people say, well, not everyone's gonna go to college. It's like, yeah, but if I prepare everyone, then it becomes their choice. I haven't made the choice for them. And so those kinds of things are really important to do when we think about high school in the future. And from where, I guess, from the Elma perspective, that's the big picture goal. What we're talking about, what we're focused on going forward, starting, well, starting last year actually, is that middle section right there. You know, schools should mirror what's happening. It's not separate from it. Uh, you know, it shouldn't be project-based, because everything we do in work, regardless of the work, is a project. So schools should be reflective of that. Uh, it should be interdisciplinary. I need my social studies teachers talking with my English teachers, talking with my math teachers, because it's all related. And if everyone is pulling in the same way, you know, we've compartmentalized things, you know, remember that, that I remember that day vividly in graduate school where I was in a macroeconomics class. And the professor was talking about the next exam. And it was the old blue book way, you know, you had this blue book you had to fill out. And he marked for grammar, sentence structure and that. And I remember the guy behind me saying, but this is economics. Why are you marking for, for, you know, LA in economics? And he just laughed. He goes, because it is all. If you can't write a coherent sentence about economics, then you haven't learned it. So, um, you know, we have to get out of those silos and get everyone working together. And with that focus on the career pathway piece of it, which is the other thing that we're going to be talking about a little bit more. You probably have seen this before. And the reason I like this so much is because if you look at the bigger things that are in here, uh, you know, knowledge, life, you know, communications, all of those things are the very things that we're trying to promote going forward with this new, I don't even know how to describe it. It's not a rebranding, but a new move forward for pathways. So you already know me, I've been here before. Uh, Dr. Josh Meeks, he's on our Zoom meeting. He's one of my colleagues that he's actually the leader of this merry band that you see up there, uh, and Phil Croucher. The, the nice thing about this group, we are all former classroom teachers. We've all been there. Uh, Dr. Meeks, former superintendent. I worked in central administration for many, many years when I was in Boston. So we've all been at all of the different levels. So we get it. And we know how to talk the various languages that when we get into the school board language, because that's a, that's another one. That's a whole different one. So we wanted to talk about when, you know, you keep hearing that word career pathway academy, you know, what, what all of that means. And we kind of, and I'm sorry for the eye chart that is up there. But the real key element is we're going to be focusing on allowing students to explore, to build up the skills and make decisions about which routes they want to go. And there will be some multiple routes. Some of which you already have and we're expanding. Others are going to be new. Now, going out to shoot, we're not going to have twenty pathways going out there. We, we don't, you just don't have the capacity to do that. But we're going to focus on, in essence, two to three pathways initially. And then build as we get our capacity going. Uh, then we'll be able to add those, I'm hoping every year, there's going to be a new pathway coming into this. Which is going to be exciting for, I'm thinking about those middle schoolers when they start seeing that, they, to get them taught in seventh and eighth grade about what potential path they want to follow. That's when you know you need it.
Yeah, I think you're doing great.
So, you know, basically, we have these concepts in mastery-based learning, which uh, we're trying to do in Elma, and I think I told you this before, you're the only school district that is doing this district one. Everybody else is, in essence, taking one program or one course. Maybe sometimes one school at the most, there aren't even many of those. You guys aren't the leaders right now. That's what everyone's looking at, finding out how is this going to work? Because you've done, you've taken the biggest bite of the apple. And, and you're doing great. I, I mean, everyone that I talk to believe you're doing great. You are so leaps and bounds ahead of everyone else because you're asking the right questions and getting the right answer. So, you know, the idea is, you know, we're going to do multiple way, multiple opportunities, multiple pathways. Uh, and multiple ways of learning the material. So there won't be one linear way, read chapter seven, take test on chapter seven, you know. That's not going to work for every kid, you know. So we're going to give them multiple ways of learning it and multiple ways of demonstrating. So I could be doing a project on Shakespeare. And let's say Romeo and Juliet, the classic. You know, how is a student going to show that they know Romeo and Juliet? Could be a lot of ways. They may make a video. They may do a podcast. They, they may write a paper, hopefully not, but but all of those things will be acceptable in that model. And that way, you know, what's the one thing that kids always argue about in terms of their education? It's not relevant. Uh, what does that mean to me? You know? Why am I studying Romeo and Juliet? Well, it's an allegory for a lot of things. Have you seen West Side Story? That's Romeo and Juliet, you know. And so when you can have those kinds of conversations, then kids are, oh, okay, I get it. Uh, you know, the other thing that's really important is developing student agency. Students in this model are taking responsibility for their learning. And the reason they can do that is because they know what's expected of them going into it. You know, so it's not, the teacher gave me an A. I earned by demonstrating something. And if I don't get something and I want to get that higher, you know, I want to get to level four, as it were. I may go to a teacher and go, what, what can I do? You know, I'm like three and a half. I want to, I want four. And the teacher can have those great conversations about, well, the reason you got the three and a half instead of the four is because this one piece was missing. You want to go off and do that one piece? How can you do the four?
Can I say something? I, I think that your point of the student agency is really important, but I also believe that defining the student agency to the student is very powerful. There's a lot of them that hear the word, they don't really know what that looks like. They don't even know how to start it. So you know, that's to me is, is a really pivotal piece.
Absolutely. And that's, and that's why I love mastery-based learning so much, is that everyone has a clear understanding of what the expectations are going in. They also know, and it's clearly defined, how they're going to be evaluated, assessed on what they do. And so, I mean, you've probably all had that experience of you go into an assessment, whatever it is, you have no idea what the teachers put in it, what they want. You know, that's why I suck at standardized tests, because I'm trying to second guess, what is they really looking for? Answer. Because I don't know. In this model, they know. You know, whether it be that kindergarten, you know, when we say very clearly, I want you to demonstrate that you can count to a hundred by ten. How you demonstrate that? What language you use to this, I don't care. But show me that you know. And so by doing that, that builds, that starts to build that advocacy. Because we want to get students asking the best question as soon Because we want to get students asking the best question a student ever asks, why? And if we've done that, then they, they're showing the agency right there, because they're asking the why question. And then every, and the other part of this is that every student can succeed, given the right experience and support. This is all about that. So as we move forward, timeline, uh, coming up on the far left, uh, for this fall, the idea being that we're going to have a couple of things going on. So I can see it, because my eyes are a little older than you guys, so I don't see as well, far away. Uh, so first thing is that we're going to launch the pathways. And the two that we're going to focus on right away, manufacturing. And manufacturing is a big umbrella term. There's a, there's a lot going on, some things you're already doing and some things are going to be. Uh, I don't know how much you all know about the Boeing Core Plus curriculum. Very powerful, very, I mean, Renton's been using it for many, many years with great, great success. They have the advantage, they're across the screen from the factory, but, uh, but the number of students that go on and wind up working for Boeing because of the Core Plus program, pretty amazing. Uh, and the other is allied health. And that's, that is kind of the other big umbrella. That's going to encompass probably sports medicine. Now that you have someone here that's coming in in the fall, that's going to be able to head up that sports medicine program. Uh, you know, how it ties into, uh, Clover Park and their, their nursing, it's a.
NAC.
NAC. So all of that's going to tie into that pathway. Uh, and so those are the two that we're really going to be focused on. And while we're doing that, at the same time, that's that place where we're going to start that integration. Uh, and getting the high school, being on the high school campus now, we'll be able to integrate the manufacturing, the allied health, and your current CTE in a more authentic way. And so we'll know, hey, these are the standards that are being met in manufacturing. So do I now have to have the student go off and do a separate class in English? If they're meeting the standards in English in manufacturing? Win-win. So in, in essence, we're, we might be able to create student schedules up to do more things with that integration. And then come, uh, this, that, late fall, we're going to start working more on the planning and training and get the projects that we're going to be using, all of those things are going to be happening uh, in late twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Some of them will have projects for the kids next fall, this fall, but we're going to really expand that as time goes on. Uh, that's also the time where we start thinking about naming and branding and recruiting. And, you know, that's when we're spending time in the middle school with our ninth graders, with our tenth graders, kind of getting them into the group so that they know what's available to them. And so that family is now what's available. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. And so next year, twenty twenty-four is when we really focus on identifying and recruiting students to expand this program. And then fall of twenty twenty-four, da-da-da-da, we have the beginning of the true pathway. We don't know what the name is yet, or what it's going to be, but that's when it's really in, it's going full tilt. And the last thing I wanted to. They, and, you know, this is our goal, by fall of twenty twenty-four, successfully launch a new learning opportunity for all the students. To develop their abilities to think critically, solve complex problems, communicate effectively, collaborate, and learn independently in a full interdisciplinary pathway. That's a pretty ambitious goal. But that is, you know, that ties right back, again, it comes full circle. That's basically the profile of an Elma Eagle, isn't it? I imagine, that's it.
And we recognize too, that we have, uh, we have very successful programs where students are already getting this, their career pathway in place. The goal, I think, is really to make it, um, more global within our high school and among our students. So rather than it being, um, you know, a niche of students who are going through it, that we're meeting the needs of all students through just, uh, the different environments as well as the different opportunities. So, um, that's part of why, you know, we've been working with Christie and identifying the manufacturing as maybe our first area of focus, because that, that one is well-established for the apprenticeships. Tyler's got great projects going on with there. And then just really wanting to make certain that the standards are in place, that they're master based and the proficiency scales are in a bit, uh, when Chris talks about, uh, can they take a blueprint into a university engineering class and those types of things. So, um, as well as with this, our ASU, um, just, that's driving a lot of. See, you know, I had a, a student come to me yesterday and say, can I graduate two years early? And I said, how old will you be when you graduate if you do that? Sixteen. Well, let's visit about what your goals are. So she came over to the school and we sat down and her parents own a lot of businesses. So she's thinking, take over the businesses, she wasn't really thinking to go on to university. As we talked about that thirty-minute conversation, her next question was, could I get a bachelor's degree by the time I'm eighteen? You know, it really is just helping them think forward. The diploma is not the finish line. Where do you go from there? So, um, I just, like, that resonated with me and, um, just contacted me three times today. But we go through ASU and we look at what is the curriculum map? And then we look at what are all the courses that we have available through the universal learner. So now she's looking at, you know, we have, we have lots of freshmen, sophomores, taking summer courses through ASU. And I just think that's remarkable. They are driven, they've been successful, um, last summer when we first launched it. And it's just gaining that momentum and they're excited about it. You know, they're mapping out, what does my high school look like? And then how do I get beyond that? So.
And, and that's really the objective. I mean, my own daughter, when she graduated from high school, she also graduated with an associate's of arts degree. Went off to college as a junior. Which was great for me, because she went to private school, so. What she wanted in a car, which she graduated. So how do you, as a board, know, you know, that we're meeting the goals? So we kind of laid out a couple of things. Uh, for you to be looking for, and I put the caveat to this. This is education, we don't turn on a dime, it's going to take some time to build up this. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a couple of years before you see the full success of what, what we're trying to do here. But there are things to be looking out for, you know. You're going to see the development of the programs, looking at what pathways we're going to be adding in. Listening, you know, you guys know it, you go out to the store and you go, you know, somewhere, wherever, parents stop you. And, you know, we know that we'll, we're successful when a parent comes up and asks you a question about one of these pathways, or asking, what's going on with this in Elma High School? I want, I want to know more, if it fits for my kid. That, to me, is a key indicator that the buzz is working and that we've done, we've done our work correctly. And then, you know, there will be periodic reports that will give you status on what's happening, where we're going. And, you know, always available through Chris or anyone, uh, to answer questions or wonderings or why is it all of those things, you're always available. Now, this gives you the opportunity, there's a lot going on there. This is very forward-thinking stuff. Don't, I tell you, don't be afraid. Be happy that Chris has come up with this vision that is achievable, that's student-focused, and that we're going to see great outcomes for. For a lot of students that have, quite honestly, kind of fallen through the cracks.
Herringham's got a nice little picture of a house, or that's a school. Um, I would say the last two years has been building the foundation of that school. We have brought our board policy into alignment with Washington State law. Washington State law says if students meet standard, they earn credit. That's, and that was a stat, uh, a code, administrative code in January two thousand twenty-one. That became statute this fall, or this spring, this last legislative session. So now that is in RCW, students meet standards, students earn credit. Our board policies now reflect that, and we're the only district in the state who has adopted comprehensive board policies aligned to statute and administrative code. So students meet standard, they get credit. East Grace Harbor High School has a sixty-four percent ELA passing rate on the state assessments, the highest ELA score in the district. A lot of times we refer to East Grace Harbor High School as our remediation school. I want to be clear, East Grace Harbor High School has the highest state assessment scores in passing rate in the district. Um, and that was actually after Julie's solution, that's two thousand twenty-two data. So when we refer to East Grace Harbor High School, and what East Grace Harbor actually does are very different. So we took the, the, the teachers that are the best at mapping out academic standard through, uh, Bill Collins and Jeff Sowers. And we've taken the best career pathway models, beginning with manufacturing, which is full registered apprenticeship, and we're bringing those into alignment. So our East Grace Harbor High School teacher teams are incredible at standardized alignment and coming up with projects. They're super reflective. You show me you learned it, I will support you on it. When you took that work into our full accreditation, that East Grace Harbor High School diploma carries the exact same weight as every comprehensive high school diploma in the state of Washington. That is already done. So we're no longer working against a lower quality diploma, it's the same diploma now. Our teachers have the highest academic performance, and we have the best project-based learning in our CT department. But our CT students are not meeting the university admissions requirements, because the CT classes are taking too much course time. Right? That's why we have such a low percentage of our students being able to move on to university, because they're not getting those university admissions requirements. But our board policy of Washington State law and our teachers who do a great job mapping out academic standard and do support in building projects can marry their standards with the projects. And East Grace Harbor High School will become a whole new school, marrying our career pathways that already exist, or the highest career pathways in the state of Washington. With the highest performing academic program, where they fully accredited their diploma. And we're now in the high school annex, where students can choose what type of education they would like. But we know we have the highest academic performance with the best projects, and we know we can marry these two things. So Herringham's work isn't really reinventing anything that's created on, because it's already there. I told Herringham, Phil and Josh, Herringham, Phil and Josh's work has become marriage counselors.
Relationship.
Relationship counselors. And how we're taking the best programs in the state and bringing them together to marry that integrated learning environment and marrying it with the, um, academic performance for a whole new learning environment. And this is that work we talked about, redefining ready. Elma leads the National Superintendent Association's work on this. This is the work that came out of the governor's work when we built youth apprenticeship through Crew Connect Washington. This is the Wash work with Washington Student Achievement Council, and Bernard, you're on our team through Jobs for the Future, which is the Harvard Department of Education and the US Department of Education. So Elma sits on a school, three school district team on leading the work, redefining the work for the rest of the nation. So this is kind of the, as the school district that has the magnifying glass from the US Department of Education, Harvard, and Washington State Education, this is where we want to go. And.
Yeah. It's a massive body of work, but it's, it's.
That's why I said, don't be afraid. I mean, if we went, if I went somewhere else and said the same thing to the board, they were probably, you know, after they got up from painting on the floor, uh, there, there would be the how. You guys have already figured out that part. Which is great, that's why you're the leaders. So now it's just a matter of supporting, you know, supporting the work and sticking with it long enough. You know, which is always the problem. Well, it's been, you know, a year and a half and we haven't seen the needle move a whole lot. So we've been here and have. Uh, so giving, you have the right people. Uh, you have the right ideas, you have the foundation already built. All we're doing now, which is, uh, the hardest thing in education, execution. That's where we're at. We're ready to execute.
Can you clarify, um, you said that like at the eighth grade, the whole, you'd begin a recruitment process? And we typically, historically, have seen East Grace Harbor be, um, you know, the, the alternative after already having attempted comprehensive high school and that didn't work, so then we made a shift. Is the thought process that students would start and that would be viewed as, um, a, a parallel, uh, mutual alternative, that, that's how we'd be packaging it?
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, as far as, um, the diploma from a comprehensive high school versus a diploma from an alternative school, because it still would be an alternative learning. Yes, no, would not be?
In, in the long-range plan, no, it will not be. And when we think of alternative education, I think it's alternative learning opportunities, because it, I mean, you're right, we typically, you know, like, I mean, I have kids who are contacting me now, parents, they've been waiting until their junior year to get out of the model that isn't working for them and into this other model. And I get excited about this, many, a couple of kids telling me, so I'm like, you use cars, so I don't know what you're talking about. But it's because it's exciting with the flexibility and the options. And when you start figuring out how to reach students
Sure.
with their learning styles and, and their needs, um, within their own lives, and, and again, that choice. Uh, you know, think of if we just flipped our whole education, that school becomes the model that, that East Grace Harbor learning environment offers them. Not as an alternative to where you go and get sent to, because you didn't make it over here.
Right.
But because this is the style that you learn in.
Right.
And, and that's what we're making available for you. And when we talk about eighth grade and just, you know, from the cell district initiative, if we could pick these kids up early enough, before they've milder needed that pathway of, I suck at school and they've been stigmatized with this label of, I don't know what you're going to do, kid, but it's going to be highly unlikely you get a diploma unless you go. Um, that we, we just have to change that whole, you know, factory mindset that, you know, we inherited, you know, from nineteen forty-five.
Right, right, right.
But, uh, so instead of thinking of it as an alternative school, thinking of as alternative learning styles.
We, we, we've built a school this way before, we helped, uh, Herringham Stan, Vanguard Academy. We didn't want to get along, and they were ran as comprehensive high schools.
Okay, that's right.
And we, alternative, you don't have, because of the new WAC and the RCW, so com, alternative schools allowed you to give credit by meeting standard, and it was an alternative way. That's the significance of the update of our board policy, and it's the significance of standards-based credit being in statutes.
Right.
Right? That's, that is now, it was like an administrative code, now it's like the law, like it's irrefutable. Um, it makes it so all schools in the state of Washington. It makes it so all schools in the state of Washington can award credit by students meeting standard. All students in the state of Washington can earn credit by meeting. The question is, is, is there a mechanism or a measurement? And it was our East Grace Harbor High School team who built that mechanism and measurement to make sure that tool's in place. And now that that tool's in place, that tool is available to every student in our district. Now, we, that our, our last hurdle is the community stigma of what's East Grace Harbor High School. That is accreditation, standardized alignment, state statute, state assessment score, everything. The only thing weighing East Grace Harbor High School down now is just community perception.
East Grace Harbor High.
I mean. Like when you said that alternative, you know, they're gonna be offered alternative learning. Why not an innovative learning center?
And we.
Gets away from the negative of alternative.
We know that, so there is, I got blasted with names. We gotta get this submitted by June second, otherwise we can't change the name. And I had to like pump the brakes because I said, if we do not engage the community in the name change process. All we're doing is moving one name and putting on a new name.
Sure.
Right? So we have to engage our community to make sure they wide understanding that. You can knock out a bachelor's degree precharged at East Grace Harbor High School. You can knock out a full career pathway with full transferable university college credit with a full credential and full certification. Right? Like we have these options now. Um, do we have a name that appropriately represents the ability on leap jump starting? You can get paid while you're working, earning a journey certification, embedding academic credit with university credit at our new school.
But can you only do that, um, at the new school? I, I guess I'm wondering. It seems like that would be. Just part of education. It's not specific. It feels awkward, like I'm having kind of this aha publicly, but why would we be looking at? Two schools that should be able to do the same thing? If we're not, if we're not. I, I don't know, maybe this is.
The decision now came down to where was the work? Who bought into the work?
Yeah, so Stephanie, what you just said is the, that is the goal. When you think five years from now. Alma High, you know, there'll be Alma High School. Right? And there'll be pathways within Alma High School and there'll be, you know. And if you're going to college and you know that's what you want to do and that's your objective, that's a pathway. But, but we're gonna treat it the way we treat all these others right now. It, it's so disjointed and discombobulated that it's not really a pathway, it's just. So, so you're right on. I, the, the goal would be that there will be no distinction. The idea of starting next year with these pathways and also talking about naming gives you the opportunity. To have these kinds of conversations. But why are we changing the name? Glad you asked that question. And then you can, you know, by engaging the community on something as complex. It is complex of coming up with a name for this new thing. Gives you a great teaching moment.
Thank you.
And thank you for. You connected all of the dots and got there pretty quickly.
You're an alternate, uh, alternate.
I can't even say it.
You're an alternate for the launch now. Recruiting all the time. Thank you. Thank you for the work and your time.
Josh, I'll chime in.
I don't have anything additional to add, just thank you and we will continue to. March down the path. It's been a exciting start so far. So thank you for the, the partnership.
Okay. Let's move on to communications and comments. Like that's so weird, just coming off of that heavy. Anyone from ETO? EESP? Hicopa? Admin? Persons to be heard, no and no. Okay, unfinished business. We have the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar. And everybody has it in front of them.
Can we enter into discussion? About this first. I have a couple of questions in regards to the school calendar. First one is, how exactly is the calendar determined for the year? Meaning start date, end date, vacation dates. What is the process in determining that?
We don't, we have bargained prior to you joining the board and me joining the district. I bargained the rate prior to ETO, so we set the start date. And then our teachers association has their own internal system and then they have to give us the calendar. And we don't have oversight of how those days get set.
Do we know that when they are set, that we're taking into consideration families? Theater schools, schools in the area of what their calendars are doing?
That was bargained away. So we don't know.
So then why does the board approve it?
Because generally school boards approve a calendar, but then, but we had made the decision as a district. Um, to bargain those decisions out.
So is the option to go back to? The teachers organization and ask them to reconsider the current schedule or calendar that they're presenting?
We can always convey on concerns, but it's not our. It's right that we have relinquished.
Well, I think there's always room for negotiating. I don't think that that's a completely taken away. If we have, if it has to come to the board to improve, there has to be some wiggle room. My concern is, is that I've had several phone calls.
I would like, instead of just regular discussion though, if we're gonna talk about specifics and how this affects it, I would like that part of record.
I've received, you know, quite a few inquiries, um. That the, the proposed schedule right now, the vacation, specifically the Christmas break. Is not convenient or conducive to our families in the area. Um, by basically taking it a week longer and going back to school on January eighth. That creates hardships for families. Families who have, um, kids that go to Satsev and McClary and feed into us or kids that go to. You know, like if.
Tomwater.
McClary School District basically waits until, or tries to wait until the calendar's set for Alma before they set theirs, so they can follow along.
Can I, um, would you mind if I break down your concerns? Into a list for a D, because a D takes those down in a matter of record. Are you okay if I do that?
Absolutely.
So I just wanna kinda stop and make sure I capture your first concern. Your first concern is, are the concerns of our students and families taken into account? And the impact on districts of students coming in from McClary and Satsev?
First concern.
That's your first concern. The second concern would be. Was it with our teachers when you mentioned like Tomwater, like the employees that live in other districts and come in and have families in one district? Uh, like your family is in the Tomwater School District, but you work in the Alma School District and now your employee calendar does not match that of your family.
Yes.
Or you could have, you could have a spouse that works in that district and you work in this district and we normally are all pretty. Within a day or two, all on the same calendar.
Yes.
You would be offset.
So I, I went back to the last twelve years of school calendars and historically. Um, we've always returned. The third of January or right around that timeframe, um, that we've gotten out earlier. This puts us back January eighth, which is a Monday. Which gives, I mean, the third would have been a Wednesday, which historically we've gone back on Wednesdays. The, I, there's just so many things that.
I'm gonna break that down again. So the other concern would be in regards to. I wanna put words in your mouth, so if I'm wrong, let me know. Um, families that have been planning vacations generally use the historic district calendar. And we have used this twelve-year calendar. So if you were gonna be planning a longer vacation, you would have used a historic calendar. Because at this point, if you're going somewhere, it would have already been booked.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So in the essence of planning your vacation, your concern is. That we have broken from the traditional calendar and disrupted our, our families from planning vacations?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Is it just vacations?
Um, well, we, I mean, we're talking sporting events, uh, practices, athletes, I mean, yeah, I mean.
And then the other concern would be in changing a twelve-year plan. It would have disrupted our coaches, our winter coaches, because winter schedules have already been built. In planning the winter athletics or student athletes and having a plan. So I just wanted to make sure that we, okay.
Yeah, I guess I don't under- I, I, I wanna know, or I'm curious on the how this. Um, this calendar comes about and what it's based on. Is it based on the needs or the, or our kids who we serve and our families and our community? Is it based on what the teachers want? I wanna know what that is because I don't think, I mean, we're here to serve kids of this community.
Well, and didn't, was there already a proposed calendar and then this is the new one? Because the dates.
You only changed that came on this was the, um. You only change in this is the late start dates. So your concern is, um, Jamie, is your concern is, are we taking in? Consideration the needs of our staff, our students and our families. We're building the calendar because as a board member, it's your job to represent your district. Have we taken in the concerns of your district and the building and construction of that calendar? I can't say what has or hasn't been done because that would have been a right that we've handled. So I can't, I can't answer for that. So I mean, as a school district, that has been a gifted right. So as a district, I can't stand in for how that has been done. I can't answer for how that's been done.
Okay. With that. I can't find a school in our area. Olympia, Tomwater, Centralia, Chehalis, Aberdeen, everywhere, um, that has a schedule like this. Everybody's going back the third of December.
So the, the, the culminating concern is in looking at all of the other district commu- of the districts in our community. That would be impacted between families, employees, living in another district. Um, you, you feel that there's, there's certain that you feel there are no other districts with our calendar. So you do feel that to consider it a concern. And I think, um, to, um. I'll use your official title Director Bowers Concerns since it's going.
I'm kidding. Yes, no, that's my.
Um, was, is this being logged into the official meeting minute record? Of your official concerns as a record of the board addressing your concerns as, as holding to your due diligence on representing the needs of your community.
Yeah.
Ade, can you read through those as you have those? Or is your?
I have some of it written down.
Is your plan to watch the video?
Fast. That wasn't really my plan. So, but what I do have, uh, the, the. You wanna know how the calendar is determined and Chris let you know that the bargain right was to ETO. Um, you've had several inquiries, especially concerning Christmas break. This is not convenient to families in our area. There's concerns of student families. Then are they taken into account when doing this calendar, employees' concerns? Third of January is historically no return, return. Families planning vacations have used those dates historically. This is a disruption to coaches, student athletes, because schedules are already set for the winter sports season. Um, are we taking in consideration staff, students and families and looking at all other districts and other schools? No other district has a calendar like ours.
At this point, I guess the last part of, of, um. My concern, or what I'm gonna say here is, I'm probably not gonna be very popular, um, with everybody, but. If we were to vote not approved this tonight, what happens?
Can be grieved.
So it can be grieved, but there's so, like, what I'm hearing is there's no room for negotiating anything.
As far as I understand. We select?
There is, I, well, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
There is room. According to contract, there is room. The reason it comes to you guys is this is what the teachers prefer. So they're bringing it to you to vote to approve. They do not actually approve the calendar. They are the ones that present it to the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
It just, to be fair though, it's also gone to every other union group, so I, I just, I. I don't, I don't wanna like just throw eight groups out. This is a district by been approved and put forth.
They would let me know and I would like.
I just didn't wanna put it out there that this.
I did not know that and I don't, I don't, I don't care.
I just didn't wanna pit the teachers as a group against.
As a whole, we all need to work together and.
Yes, but I just wanted to communicate that, that this has district-wide. Employee approval if, or.
Teachers vote on it. Once they voted and set what they would like, it is sent out to the other groups. To view if they have any concerns. No, they rarely have any concerns and go along with the teachers because they really don't have a say. Per bargain where the teachers.
If the calendar is not voted or approved tonight, where does that hold us up and anything else?
Budget. Big time, um, because I have to have days set. Our L and I is based on workdays. And so I have to map everybody's day out.
It wouldn't change.
It doesn't change, it may not change dollars or days.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not. It's not changing the days.
The amount of days, it's just.
Right, and I have to put those in individually for each person. So if we change winter break, I'm changing winter break for everybody.
So like if they're physically in the building, they need to know on what days are they physically on.
Secretaries come in during winter break, or in during winter break. Some pairs may come in to do a project or teachers may work on a project and do professional.
When is the fuck, the. Calling school year's calendar usually voted on by the ETO or developed by ETO? Is there a set date?
I believe in our calendar, there is a set date, May first. I think I, maybe if I remember right, I'm not positive on that.
Cause I know that this calendar was brought to us before for the start date and the end date. But when I voiced some concerns about the calendar then, they said everything else in the middle of it. Was not being approved yet. And now I just feel like what. The, uh, how it affects the budget and other areas of our district. Now, having it come to us today. That is difficult for me to swallow because I feel like we should have these conversations. Maybe sometime in May, not here in the middle of June.
Or the day before.
Right.
And to understand that this calendar went to Satsev, it went to McClary and they have approved it based on this weird winter break.
Well, I think they approve it because that's what they have to do.
Well, they had to meet their bargain where ours has been stretched out.
Well, yeah, I, but what I mean is like, they're, they're just gonna have to in good faith accept that contract, because what are they gonna do? Have a upset if they continue on their normal, a normal winter break and they don't align themselves with Alma's, then they. Yeah, they have, yeah, like they really have to.
We pushed everybody in or pushed them in a corner and I almost feel like I'm backed up against a wall right now. We pushed everybody in or pushed them in a corner and I almost feel like I'm backed up against a wall right now. And I don't know what the what the answer is, but I'm not ready to approve.
Well, do we want to, do you have any other concerns or comments or do we wanna put this to a vote?
I I guess, I mean, I I we looked at those um calendars, Lisa, and in two thousand eighteen. Like it's not this, it's this, it's the same timeframe, like how January four, January first must have been like maybe on Sunday. And so, uh, you know, or maybe. Yes, however, it was or maybe January first was on a a Wednesday, I think, is the calendar we're looking at. And so we didn't come back on Friday because we already had Thursday off. So some of this is also just like how the actual holiday falls. Um, I think this is really late to get this, but I also think it's it's really late to not have a calendar out to the district. And the fact for me that it has gone through all of our groups and this is what collectively, I I want to believe that our staff team would take our families. And if there's, there was thoughtful, meaningful reasons as to why this was, you know, there, it's hard to make a conversation with details we don't know. Maybe they sat through and thought, well, December fifteenth is really early. There's still good days of of instruction. I I I don't, I don't know because we weren't part of that conversation, but it feels late to come to the table and go. Which I don't like, it's just late, but it just feels late to come in and say, know about something that we don't really know the information about and to turn it back out. I'd like that, I did, Jamie, of I would like to be able to give, I guess, ETO um some strong recommendations about when setting the calendar. And I want to think these things would have already been taken in consider- considerations. I don't wanna be insulting, assuming that they weren't. But if we feel strongly that we wanna try to split the difference and go Wednesday to a Wednesday versus clear into that next week or something, that maybe that's where we would give some feedback, but currently.
That's what I wonder. It's like the feedback portion, no, no representation to what.
Or given any time.
Or is that not a thing of the contract?
And I I want, I need to apologize that it is so late to you. When I gave it to you guys for the last meeting, it was not just to approve the late start. I miscommunicated to a D. It was to approve the whole calendar. So we really would be doing this early, earlier. Um, but due to circumstances in my personal life, I couldn't be here. I didn't catch it and I apologize. So um, it is not ETO bringing it late, it is Lisa bringing it late.
It's not quite that simply. So we're not gonna let you take the total hit. But I mean, we also only approved for late starts. We took it very literal and and you had shared that with Jamie and I, whom we meant to do the budget. So it was just a learning lesson for all of us. We'll know next year that we don't approve a partial calendar. After, after the first time of doing the beginning end dates, we'll know that we approve a whole calendar. Right?
I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
I just wanted to make clear for the record, my vote aye is because contractual obligation, so.
But I'm not sure it's contractual obligation. We haven't seen the contract.
I mean, that's kinda what it feels like at this point.
I'm not gonna disagree with it in a minute.
Yeah. And I I don't typically like call her out because I'm the one that do it, but um I, you know, it doesn't affect anything, but on the principle of how it's presented and how it's gone about, I would like to register my own no. So um, that's still motion carries. Uh, was there any further discussion? Oh, no, we're past that. I'm sorry, motion carries. I'm I apologize. It's been a very long meeting. I got twitchy. Um, we are audit exit informational only. Ms. Arnold?
I sent you guys the paperwork on the exit from the audit. I think we had a very good audit considering how much money was shoved our way in federal funds that we were limited, how we could use it, how much time we had to use it, um, a lot of things, moving parts. There was a recommendation, an exit recommendation um in my area. I used a hundred thousand board leases to report. They have recommended to school districts and I took that recommendation from the SD. They're now coming back and saying they'd like it at twenty-five thousand to report on the financials. It was just an exit item, not anything else. We also did get a finding in our um funds that we received from E-Rate for computers. We received money um on a quick turnaround and we missed some guidelines on going out for bid. So we did not follow the bid process. But I would like to say the computers were, or the money was used for exactly what the feds gave it to us for. Turnaround, computers out to kids. The only part we missed was the bid process. So that was the only issue within our audit. So kudos to everybody for having a great audit this year. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, uh, new business, approval of issue two. I'm just pretending I can read it. Approval to issue administrator and sort of like contracts.
So I'd like approval to put out certificated and administrative contracts first thing in the morning so we can capture them before they reach campus.
I'll move for the approval to issue administrator and certificated contracts.
Been a motion made and seconded. Sorry, you lost out, Michael. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval resolution zero eight two 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 three for WIAA renewal. Mr. Clark?
It's time to renew our WIA membership and I need a couple of signatures if you guys approve it. Do we have this?
We already have.
Okay.
Yep, yep, we got all of them. Three, I think, to be exact.
There's only two. I just gave two more copies in case you made this.
Oh.
There's a middle school one and I.
I'll move for the approval of resolution zero eight two 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 three for WIAA renewal.
Second.
The motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Superintendent Report, Mr. Smith.
Tomorrow night is the last day of tomorrow during the day's last day of school. We did a poll. We had a reschedule. We actually doubled booked the Longridge facility on this night. I forgot it was three weeks without a board meeting. So in our three-week jumping board meetings, I was mapping all of our board meetings two weeks out. So then I scheduled it over this night. So we did a survey. Manny said this tomorrow night, so that's when we're holding it. So instead of celebrating, well, I will be celebrating the last day of school with our community who would like to weigh in.
Another opportunity.
I will be very, very, very blunt on what we'll be talking about. So for the remaining people here, we are going to be talking about turf. Toyota Stadium. We are going to be talking about turf. Anybody who has a very strong opinion about turf, I encourage they come.
This looked like it was edited in somebody else's direction.
That, well, I think the big question is, is, is there turf? Because.
The turf or not to turf? Is that?
So I'm just, this is just, I keep it's not on the agenda, so we don't need to talk about this. I'm just saying, anybody who wants to talk about turf, turf or not to turf, um, will be there because turf is the major on meeting with many, 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 many people in our community. I've learned our major point of contention is not, yes, we're, I hate to say out loud. I'm nothing more than a sport. It's a different age sport, no.
Oh.
But turf, because turf is what carries the major price ticket. Cause it's either drainage or moving. And our biggest cost on any kind of resolution regarding Davis Field is turf. That's the biggest price point. And our community needs to let us know how strongly they feel about turf. So where that's our point of topic tomorrow is how strong. And we will have a survey. So even if you can't go, we will have another survey.
That is a shocker.
Right. But beyond that, we had an incredible end of the school year. I am exhausted. Eric came by just telling me he was exhausted today. Wearing, I mean, I think he came to work with Jamie's last. Um, that is what I have.
I'm making perfect.
That's the end of my report. I'm done.
Insert Mr. Chris Kelly.
I make a motion.
It's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Have a good night. Have a great summer.